Hello and welcome. Time is now 6:31. We'll go ahead and get this meeting started as we always do with the opening of the meeting and the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you all for coming. This is, of course, the Select Board meeting September 7th, Tuesday, as we had the holiday yesterday. And so we will start the next section with a roll call of board members. I'm Dave Hemmle, the Chair of the Select Board.
Marlo Herrick.
Normandy Blake.
Now we'll move us on to announcements and project updates. As we are a board and we have a topic that is ongoing, I'm going to pass this as an announcement that I would like to make to my board members to see if they would like me to make that for us as a board while I move on to the project updates. So they'll be able to let us know that in just a moment. So what you can see here is the status update. I tend to do this at the start of each month for the department meetings as we are at now. And you can find this on our website and also pass some out and put one on the back by the sign in chief. But you can see Closer Bridge is still on track. Nothing new there. The schedules are also being looked at and that is on track and in progress. That'll be probably October after public hearings. That's okay.
Sorry.
Next is the Salt Ship. And we have that property now. That's all good. We were originally expecting the access way to be completed by the end of this year. We'll see if that can still happen. We are currently researching exterior boundaries on the site of that in order to make sure that our access road is going to be okay where it was expected. The Town Hall, we have... I bet I went to sleep or something. Anyway, the Town Hall, we have ongoing projects here. Of course, we've been finishing off projects as we go along and trying to do as much as possible. You may have seen several of the new emergency lights, the LED lighting. So that's been put in place. We've updated and come up to fire code for the kitchen downstairs and fire suppression system. That is completed. We've also gotten through and sent out the water testing here. Those results will be back whenever they're back, probably in a week or two. The next things that are ongoing, you'll hear about some of it tonight, is the quotes for paving, the security and changing out the doors and fobs, and then additional maintenance with the stairs ramp and then further into ABA compliance. And we are working our way through this as fast as we can, but of course, we can't just immediately do everything because it takes time. But that is going well. White Plains Bridge is behind schedule. We are waiting on the engineer. The engineer is... We are still waiting for a completed PDS application design, but there is a meeting with the engineer and PDS on site tomorrow. So hopefully that can get moved forward fairly quickly after that point. Town property sales, some has been completed. That's ongoing. You'll continually hear about that through various meetings as we're going, including public hearings that have to take place. Dune Meadow Solar is the solar project. Pilot agreement recommendation letter is expected from the subcommittee after the next meeting to come to the Select Board. And then the wetlands ordinance is in progress. That will actually be coming up very shortly on September 16th at 6:30 is the Planning Board's first public hearing on that matter. Concord Drive, many people, especially here in Pillsbury Lake, are impatient to see that done. And originally, we were hoping to have that done before school was in session. And later on, I'm sure we'll get a report from our road agent on exactly where that is. But that was in what the last time we talked about it. That was waiting for the... That was waiting for the wetlands to finish completion before we continued on as the town to put the road on top of it. Contracts, those are expected to be done by the end of the year. You'll see some of that in discussion tonight. Records retention, we did start up the records retention committee. They've met several towns several times. The committee will be meeting again this month, and they are currently documenting the existing records, documents, and other items. The policy, the initial policy, we hope to have by no later than town meeting for that. Policy reviews, we have started. We've been running through and starting to read more of the policies as a board. We are expecting to get through the majority of them by the end of the year. We do have a meeting on October 12th to handle that as a work session specifically for that item. The budget has been started, and the department heads will be meeting with us starting this kind of month. And CIP is also going on, and department heads have been requested to turn in information to CIP, I believe, by the end of the week.
The next Monday, 13th.
Next Monday, so the 13th. So that's going to conclude that. Have you had a chance to check through this to... If that's okay to...
Yep.
Okay. And I apologize once again. Give this to Dee to let her read as well. And thankfully, now we don't have to be blind. We can actually see it.
Oh, good.
So the first thing, obviously, we have a rather important and large national event coming up, and that is September 11th. And this is the 20th anniversary of the September 11th. And I just wanted to point that out so that everybody could remember and be aware of it. We're certainly not going to take time right this second at this meeting for that, as it is not September 11th, but wanted to make sure that everybody was aware and remember that that's actually coming. And when you see half staff flags and the like, it's actually a rather important big deal.
That's good.
All right. Having shown this to the board, I will now make another announcement and statement. And so the following is an announcement and my statement as the Chair of the Select Board and apparently as the Board regarding Walker Pond property. As most folks are well aware, there was a recent court case that has been reported on regarding said property and has also resulted in the position of the town treasurer being vacated. While it has been an unfortunate series of events, that is what has happened. The town has a deputy treasurer who has been stepping in to do the full work of the previous treasurer. Any appointments will be after there's time to fully discuss the matter with both them and the Board as is scheduled for further discussion later in this meeting. But rest assured, our books and accounts are continuing to be attended to as they should be. Regarding the land, the Select Board has not made... Sorry, the Select Board has not previously made any decision on the matter other than to wait for the results of the reported case. We expect to discuss the options in non-public session under RSA 91A21 at the end of this meeting and with legal counsel before making any public statement on the matter at future meeting. To this point, we will not be making further confirmations or answering further questions on the matter until then. Thank you. All right. Did any board have any additional announcements to make?
Nope.
Good job.
All right. So that will move us down our agenda to our first appointment, which is the tax collector.
Absolutely.
Please do. Yes, anytime that you have an appointment, this is the dedicated space for that so everyone can see and hear correctly.
Come on down. Thank you.
Dave, I'm handing out... Karen and I have talked about these properties and we've quoted them by number so that the person's name does not immediately mention.
Yes, I'll be referring to them by number.
If you could make sure that the microphone is aimed straight at your face, please. That way other people can hear it.
There it is. Okay, there are eight parcels, and these are parcels that have 2018 taxes unpaid. As of about 15 minutes ago, number one has been paid, so we can cross that off the list. I've done everything legally required of me, and I feel I've done even more. I've contacted most people of... Well, three of the property owners are deceased. I did call several people because they did not accept their registered certified letter, and one other person did not sign it. A third party, second party signed it, so I have been making phone calls for some of these people. But I feel that they've all been notified. Number eight did tell me he would be in tomorrow to pay, so we're really looking at two through seven. And at this time, because I feel that I've done the job required by law and then some, I would suggest that you... That we go ahead and deed the property tomorrow at new time.
Mrs. King, is the purpose of their meeting to advise the board if they had an objection to any of the properties being tax debited? Is that right?
Exactly. Exactly. I did email you tax cards several weeks ago. It's your responsibility to have reviewed those and to have made any decisions as to whether you, for whatever reason, you do not want to take those properties by tax deed.
Karen, just for the public, so we take it by tax deed, then what happens? The town takes it, and then do we sell them or we have to wait a couple of years more? I know we've waited years, but do we have to do... How do we have to do that?
Quite honestly, after the tax deeding is done, the deed gets turned over to the town manager, and it is up to the Select Board to decide how to dispose of those properties or whether to or not. You don't have to dispose of them, but I think the incentive has been in the last few years is to get it back on the tax deeds, the tax.
So then we don't have to wait anymore after we didn't notify, basically?
I would recommend moving on as soon as you can. There are some legal steps you have to do before you do that, but I would suggest that we do that right away to get them back on their tax roll and also keep the town out of the real estate business.
Okay.
I agree with that.
Okay. And to that point, legal steps, one of the main ones that comes up a lot is that as part of the process, the previous owner that got the land deeded from them has first right of refusal to buy it back.
That's correct.
Okay.
It should also be noted that the town may not make any money on this transaction or may allow what is owed the town.
That's what I want to point out.
Any other further comments or questions from the board? All right. And so in your professional opinion, you do believe that these are appropriate to be deed at this time?
I do.
All right. Then...
I just thought married.
Think about that again.
In that case, then I would make the motion that we accept the list of properties to be deeded as presented to the board minus the paid and expected to be paid.
Right. Well, would we minus it though? Because what if they doesn't show up tomorrow before noon? Is that fair to... I'm just...
Okay, contingent upon...
Right. Yeah, yeah, that's what I...
And I believe he will. He is done this every year.
Okay. But still, as long as we're fair, that's all we want to be, you know? This isn't a fun thing to vote on together.
It's not a fun thing for me to do.
I know. Karen, I'm sure it's not.
But I do know that number eight, his modus operandi is to come in at... Before the bell clangs. Okay. Two, three, four, five, and six, seven, actually, it's one, two, three, four, five parcels. The reason I numbered them is because there are only one, two, three, four names, but six parcels. And as I said, three of them are deceased. I had a conversation with number two's granddaughter and told her when we spoke in August that the property would be deeded in September, and it was in her best interest to pay the 2018 taxes. There was a question about the deed. So I feel that...
Is there any other ones on here that was deceased? Just that one?
Yes, the owner of three, four.
Okay.
That's the property down here, the White Colonial.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah.
And number five.
But you couldn't get in touch with anybody on the three, four necessarily? Just nobody's...
I tried quite a bit to find living relatives, and I was not able to.
Yeah, okay, that's what I was... I'm sure you did, I just didn't know.
And number five, I was able to find a relative, and I called twice and left messages, and they have not called me back. But I was very clear in the status of the property.
Yeah, gotcha.
All right. So again, that motion was to accept the list as presented to us minus names contingent upon themselves paying before the deeding. Do we have a second?
I second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you for doing this unfortunate part of our job.
Yeah.
And thanks for going above and beyond. I'm sure you've done that.
All right. That moves us on to our second appointment with the town clerk.
Just begin.
Yeah.
Dana, I had forwarded you a contract. Were you all able to receive that or review that?
You mean the software agreement?
Yes. So this would be phase two of implementing credit cards, not in my office but for my office. This phase two would be online only at this point. And it would be motor vehicle renewals as well as dog renewals. That would be added on. So I didn't know if you had any questions for me?
Michelle, you chose this because it agrees with your software?
Yes. Avatar is the software provider currently, so it's just an add-on to their software, meeting the needs of people that are asking or have been asking for credit cards.
So this would be for the clerk's office only, basically? Yeah. And there was a fee associated with it?
There's a fee that I wasn't anticipating with Invoice Cloud, which is the company that Avatar contracts with to provide that service of credit cards. So they hold all the names, the credit cards. We... That's never anything we have to worry about being breached or maintained security-wise within our office.
Do they get charged? There must be a percentage.
There is a percentage. So they can pay online via check, which is 95 cents.
Yep.
If they pay with a credit card, it's $2.95... Not $2.95, 2.95% of whatever their transaction is, which is what Karen currently has.
That's right, on the tax stuff.
On the tax stuff. And then...
But they pay for it anyways.
The customer pays for that, but I would have to pay a SIP. Not me, but would... $750 software upgrade or whatever you want to call it. And then the invoice cloud is $100 a month, and that was the cost that I wasn't expecting back because Karen doesn't pay a monthly fee for invoice cloud.
So why is that's different?
From what I understand, it's back when they first introduced this option of paying online, and so maybe she's grandfathered or...
She was slick.
Yep. But it's...
Yeah.
Now they've... I've checked with other towns as well that have the credit card option, and they also pay $100 a month.
And do you feel like that doing this and offering this... Is there any way the town kind of reaps some benefit from paying that $100? Or is it just more or less being good to...
I think it's meeting the demand of what the public is looking for personally. And it might reduce traffic in the office because if people can do it online, they're more apt to be able to do that. And it doesn't reduce our work at all, but maybe the traffic through the office.
I see a lot of mention, of course, motor vehicle stuff. Can this also be used for other items such as, you know, dog license fees and so on?
Yep.
Is it everything in your office?
No, it would... Just dogs, dog renewals and motor vehicle renewals. So if there was another type of transaction for motor vehicle, then they would have to come in. So if it was a transfer or some other change within the renewal process, they would still have to come in. But phase three will be allowing them to pay over the counter through credit card and debit cards in my office.
And that $100 would be in that cloud?
That's part of... Yeah, that would be part of that as well. And then you probably saw it here, but folks can also sign up to get an email reminder to renew, which then means it eliminates that physical mailer that is sent to them. So that does save money because it's only 15 cents versus the cost of postage and envelopes and labor to stop all that.
As a tech guy, I find it abhorrent that they want 15 cents to send a single email. But it is cheaper than paper and stamp, so...
Uh huh. As a tech guy, when you think about the $100 a month.
As a maintenance and making sure that payments and servers are up to date and secure and everything else, that's not that bad. Neither is the 750 setup. However, they are a standard cloud service, so they get savings of scale when they do that sort of thing. So while it's a reasonable fee, they're certainly making most of it as profit.
I would like to add that I've already... My office has already been recovering fees through... When I went to phase one, which was the one check, so eliminating a check to the town and a check to the state, we had to go to one check. I... That's what they did, that's one check. So when I did that in September of 19, we also added a $1 mail processing fee. So I have the figures for 19, but really 20 is my only full year of knowing how much that brought in, and it was $2,674.74 just in one year. So that more than makes up for the cost of the extra $100 a month that I wasn't anticipating.
Gotcha. Good to know. That's very important.
So I guess I would just like the blessing to move forward on that.
Ultimately, it's really not going to... It sounds like you're covering the fees.
Yep.
Convenient to what people want, so...
It's a long time coming. I wish I had it in place last year because of COVID, obviously.
All right. Any further questions or comments?
Nope. You have it all.
All right. Then I would move that we accept Michelle's proposal to move along with the software agreement for the Avatar online payment processing system.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That moves us forward to Tara.
I'm not a department head.
We're not.
Not yet.
We're at appointments.
Oh, okay. Well, first of all, I heard what you said in the beginning, so I will...
So do you need a mic? And if you're going to do a full presentation, we'll need you to come up here. My offer would be that based on the announcement and knowing that that's probably the topic that you wish to talk about is to offer to move this to a future board meeting when we have more information and have been able to talk with legal.
This is exactly what I was going to say because you covered it in the very beginning. My question was just where do we go from here, which you're working on it. So... And I've got a huge amount of information which I can get to you, you know, whenever you want, you want it. I can give you copies of whatever you need. I've got it all from the town of Webster, but you won't have to go hunting all over the place. But I wanted to thank you all very, very much. It's been a horrible time. You know, it's been very, very stressful for the town and for the Select Board and everybody else involved. And it's just about transparency and, you know, accountability. So do what you're going to do, and if we need to discuss something, you can contact me, I can contact you, and, you know, we can just go further with however I can help you in any way.
Dana, at a previous meeting, we were going to get a packet from Tara that was being delivered to you with all the various information. Have we gotten that?
No, I don't think I have. No, he would know if he got it.
Okay.
It's pretty hectic. So I will... I'll get you the full packet. And I have things highlighted so you don't have to read through a million pages or anything. But like I said, this is just... It's to help everybody in the town to protect the taxpayers, to protect everything. So, you know, no animosity towards anybody or anything. This is just something that happens. So I'll get you that packet of information, and then you can move forward with whatever you need to do.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just want to make sure that we have a copy of that on record. All right. Then moving on to our next appointment, that's going to be our illustrious department heads. So come on up, gentlemen.
I guess I will.
All right.
The last run that I got was 8:25. I don't... I think there's been a run since then.
Yes.
My stuff isn't up to date, so I just have it, but it's... So...
It was one today, actually.
Was that my correct?
It was today that it went.
Okay. I ran that off last night to be prepared, so I didn't check it today, so...
The holiday calendar.
But I still have money.
Good. Yeah, spent it all. Good.
We'll do the highway stuff because that's quick. Cut some brush on detour road, stuff that's hanging down and really getting the mirrors and stuff on trucks and oil trucks and oil companies that aren't happy. So there's a lot of that that's been overgrown over the years, so we did get detour road the other day. Concord Drive, the water company should be finished down there this week. They had like three or four more house hookups to do today, and then they're going to pick up all their lines and stuff that are beside of the road, the temporary. The new main is charged, and every time they go to a new house, a new hookup, it's being charged so that the water's flowing underground as well as on top. So very, very great folks. I don't know who chose that company to do the work at Pillsbury Lake, but I don't think they could have done better. Hustle and work and get along and good communication and just great folks. It's been a pleasure working with them. Awesome. We did go out back on New Hampshire Drive where it goes into just before the dirt park. There was a low culvert there, and we built the road up because we couldn't move the culvert with, you know, go lower with the culvert because of the lake and to keep everything the way it was. So we did a little... So we did a little project out there last week. Went around with a grader and cut the potholes smoothed up on the roads, I think, the last couple of weeks, so. Am I missing anything?
I think you hit most of it. All the other roads look really good, but that makes a huge difference down there at the end of the road where you fill that up.
Yeah, yeah.
Level it right out, made it smooth, no big water areas down there now when it rains.
And Phil did ask me the other day where we put Chadwick Hill into an emergency lane, if I could go down there and do something with that first culvert that's coming across because it's, the cruisers are getting wet, getting the bottom of the wash going through.
It's, it's wet.
So, um, probably gonna go down and putter on that for a half a day or something here right off so they can get in and out and do what they need to do out for a little. So I think that's pretty much for the highway stuff unless you folks have anything.
Emma, you and I talked about the gentleman on Concord Drive. The boy got a letter for that and I just wanted you to just update him. I remember you were working on it, who takes it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I got the same letter.
Yeah.
He's concerned that we took way too much of his land. But I did the road, the water company came and they took what I didn't because they had to get the water line in. We did break a window when we were breaking that rock. And my idea was for that whole rock to be gone. And after we broke the window, and I was working that day when they called and said the glass got broke. Phil was, I was in the chief's office at the fire station when I received the call. And Phil was sitting in there, we were going, Lieutenant Mitchell, just so you make this clear. So I asked him if he would come down with me to go over it because it was a, an accident that had happened, and he did. And we got right a hold of Granite State Glass. And they couldn't get the glass that they needed. So the gentleman there at thirty Concord Drive gave me a number that had the glass. And I contacted them and it was a runaround for, mm, three weeks. And finally, last Friday, after I left them a, quite a message that morning, a gentleman from the glass company called back, said that he had talked to the homeowner and they had all the arrangements. He had ordered the glass and it would be in within two weeks and everything was gonna be taken care of. Granite State Glass was up over three thousand dollars for the whole job. And we're at thirteen hundred dollars with this other company with everything that, to take care of everything and the labor in from start to finish, so.
Who's the other glass company?
I have it.
That's okay, that's all right, I just was curious, that's interesting, that's a lot of honey.
Superior Building?
It's something like that, they do the sunburst, with the colored glass.
Yeah.
Wow, that's a difference.
Yeah, it was. And, um, it's supposed to be everything that this gentleman needs to get taken care of. He's not happy with me that the rock's not gonna be gone, but I didn't feel that if we, I didn't want to do any more damage. I guess you could spend a bunch of money and skirt it and do a bunch of stuff, but, um.
So like a rock went through the window or just a shot, just?
Well, we were down there getting that rock out of the way with that great, with the pounder.
So it just knocked the rock into the window?
Yeah.
It wasn't just a shaking of the, the break of the window?
No, 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 a piece of that rock.
Went in.
Went off and, and launched there. So, and things happen.
Yeah, that's true.
So the window's getting fixed. He is very unhappy with me that the rock isn't gonna be gone. But I just didn't wanna take a chance on doing any more damage.
Fair enough.
Sounds reasonable. Is the remainder of the rock on his property or is it still our right of way?
A lot of it's still on his property.
Okay, so he's free to then do what he wants to with the rock?
Correct.
Okay.
I did, I did tell the gentleman and I knew it was just, I knew it wasn't gonna fly, but I threw it out there. Said if he wanted to come in and sign a waiver with, with the town that if any other windows got broke, that we could finish taking the rock. And I can't say that I blame him, he didn't wanna do that. So I did give him the opportunity, but I can't, you know, like I said, I can't say that I, right? Can't say that I blame him for not doing it, but, um, I didn't wanna take the chance. We screwed up once, I didn't wanna do it twice.
Well, kind of, not really. Can't help but, unless you put up a barrier.
Right, without spending a bunch.
What, what, getting rid of this rock was just because it was gonna make the swing easier or?
Yeah, we've been driving around it for a hundred years, so we're gonna drive around it. We got a lot of it.
Yeah.
We got, we got, what, four or five feet?
Oh, yeah, at least.
It made the road too narrow.
Yeah, no, no, I, no, I.
So, um.
Cut rocks as big as one of your trucks.
Bigger.
Yeah.
So we tried. And if he's, he, yeah. I didn't, it was one of them, I told him I'd like to see it going as much as he would, but I didn't wanna break anything else.
All right. I guess that moves us on to fire.
Um, fire. I will start with, we had a building fire a month or so ago across from the fire station. I think I talked about it the last time at the meeting, but I didn't really go into details. But I've been working close with Steve and Phil. He's the New Hampshire Fire Marshal's Office. On the night of the fire, we had four marshals plus the top marshal was there with us. We brought in a dog to smell for gas and stuff. We worked there quite a bit. The next morning, I went back with the fire marshal. We worked over four hours there with the backhoe, pulling this thing apart, doing investigation. I will say it was an arson fire. We have come to that conclusion. It's still under investigation. Phil and the marshals, Lieutenant Mitchell, Mitchell and the marshals have done some investigating, interviewed some people. I can say that much and it's an ongoing investigation. Let's see, Bosquín in our old home day, in Salisbury's old home day, we sent truck, fire truck to that, everything went good. Five vehicles from the firehouse went over to Charlie Brothers to get inspected. The radiator support on the forestry truck was bad. Two ball joints on the passenger side, the exhaust needed to be changed. So the total of that job just for that one vehicle was thirty-two hundred and thirty-one dollars and sixty cents. Tanker needed some work, that was over three grand. The ambulance was a grand. Engine three was a grand, engine two, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. So the total bill was close to nine grand to get everything done this year. That was oil change, filters, just gone right through from one end to the other. So it was up more than most years because of the stuff to get them in shape.
Is that only vehicle mechanics or mechanical work? Or is that also including all the fire apparatus?
No, that, that is all the apparatus. Yeah, that's the two engines, the tanker, the ambulance and our forestry. So, um, MSA, the new packs that we got a year ago. Every year they have to be certified. Company comes in and goes right through them and inspect them. That was nine hundred and twelve dollars and ninety-one cents last month, so everything is all done there. October twenty-seventh, Perkins Pump will be at the fire station, will do all our yearly pump testing and everything will be done on the pump test. Someday I'll get this figured out. Um, we are at. We're at a hundred and sixty calls for service. And last year at this time, right to date, we were at a hundred and fifty-three. So we're seven calls ahead of last year on that. A young man just finished, the last time I told you, two young men finished Fire One, but one of them went on to Fire Two. Going through that class and we're gonna pay for that class out of.
Single smoke area.
Is he or the other, you know, gentleman anticipating further classes?
With the one that's gone to two?
Are we either expecting Fire Two from the other gentleman?
Not right off, not right off. It's, it's, um, this, the young man that's doing, went right to Fire Two. He's a single young man and the other has a family and it takes.
Time.
It's a lot of time and, um, and so. Yeah.
So I will quickly jump back to roads for one second. I believe I was looking at, and maybe it's out of date now, but I believe I was looking at a previous budget portion and noticed that we did not have much of anything out of the block grant for road salt and sand, et cetera. How is that progressing and when and how should we expect to see that coming along? Because I know you like, you talk about wanting to have stuff ahead of time and I know you try to do that, so.
Right, well, I have the sand.
You're talking about mine, sand and salt.
Right, right. I have to get the salt. I can call today, it will be here tomorrow.
Okay.
And what I do on my sand and salt is, I have this year's sand all in place, but I like to have a couple thousand yards screened out at the pit. So in March, if we have a bad ice winter, it's all screened out. Do you dig it out of the snow instead of having to screen it? And you work eight hours and get four hours worth of work, it's not feasible.
Right.
And I save that towards the end of the year to do that because if we have a bad rainstorm or the roads go to heck, if I have all my money in salt at the salt bay in, in sand, then I have, I got, I always have something to fall back onto. So like the end of October, when we've only got a couple of months, then I spend my money to fill my cupboards.
Gotcha.
But if my cupboards are full and the bankbook is empty and we have a, one of them.
That's the October.
October floods, then we're gonna be trying to find money elsewhere. So that's the theory behind that. And the block grant money has to be spent because we can't encumber that.
Right.
So, um, I haven't used a lot of that block grant money yet this summer, but, um.
Bet you're on it.
I am on it.
Perfect.
I am on it. Yeah.
Emma, can we talk about the cameras?
Uh, we can't talk about the cameras because this gentleman right there.
So, I have a purchase order here that I'd like to submit to the board. It's for three thousand five hundred and fifty-eight dollars. It's for the cameras, three security cameras and an eight channel recorder plus all the associated things that go with it. And it's pretty detailed, explains what it is. It's from Electronic Security Protection. Now, this is the same company that does all our work now and has for years at the station. And it's a single vendor, we can't find another vendor that can even do it at this point. We've tried to contact other vendors, the last one we did went out of business before we could even get a good bid out of it. And it's not even, it's three thousand dollar bucks, so I don't have to get three bids. If I could find three vendors, I probably would try, but it's under the ten thousand dollar budget set. I think this would be the best guy, we know them, they've done a scrape. We've never had any problems, when there's a problem, we call them, they're right there. They know our system because they put it in. I think it'd be the best, best bang for our buck for this public safety building. And these cameras are for the fire station, inside the fire station. Dave will understand the second page, no, because that's all the technical details on what this stuff is, because I don't know it.
Oh, that's the second one. Thanks.
The second page is the estimate that we had in front of us already. So it was only the first one that I, that I didn't say.
Two TB, what's that?
So, so it's just.
That's fine, you're the TB, you're the IT guy.
It's the amount of storage.
Oh, okay, good.
So we'll leave this with you because it needs to be signed.
Oh, all right.
Okay, how's that?
Does anybody else want to touch it before you do that?
It's all yours.
All right, I will hand this to Dana. We would, I guess, need a motion for accepting that.
Yes. And explains where I'd like to see the money come from. If we can get it, I think you'll see that Dana down there, like three quarters of the way down on the first page, in small print. We're hoping to get it from the recovery money. And if not, it'll come from the public safety building.
Boy, there's a fine line, isn't there?
It is.
So Dana, how do we need to make that motion to make it appropriate for being able to come from those funds?
I think. I think you would just need to make a motion approving this transaction with the instructions that it's prepaid out of the American Rescue Plan Act.
All right. Then, do we have any other, other questions or comments or concerns on this? All right. Then I would move that we accept the purchase order and estimate for a total of three thousand five hundred and fifty-eight dollars from Electronic Security Protection as presented by our chiefs for the public safety building to, funds to come from either the American Rescue Plan Act or if not, the appropriate budget line item from the public safety building.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Anything further, Emma?
Yeah. I'm good, if you.
All right. So then I guess we'll move on to the chief while we sign.
So start off with the budget, we love the budget. We got one thousand, one hundred and eleven thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars and eighteen cents remaining in my budget. That was two hundred ninety-six thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars. So equates to thirty-seven point six seven percent of my budget left for the year, which is well in. So that's how I'm coming always near running over. Calls for the month, we had, a lot of years on vacation. We had one out on maternity leave. So we had motor vehicle stops, we're down by fifty-three motor vehicle stops, forty-six warnings, seven summonses, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars and forty cents in fines, two arrests with four charges. seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars and forty cents in fines, two arrests with four charges, sixty-seven calls of service for the month, animal complaints on licensed dogs, five assists to the fire department and EMS calls, and the usual sex offender registry, vacant house checks, residential burglary alarms, the ASO investigation, welfare checks, suspicious vehicles and persons. So it was actually relatively quite much for the month of August. However, we did have two big things, we had a fatal motor vehicle accident where we had a small child lost to life, and we had the ASO on Battle Street, both which are still under investigation at this time.
I guess my only question is, last, maybe it wasn't last time, maybe it was a time before that. Recently, we talked about the speed sign, has that been repaired yet?
Speed sign should be repaired this week. They were waiting for control board, module board, so that should be up and running, and.
Oh, the one we shared?
We share with Bosworth.
Oh, Bosworth.
Bosworth and Warner, the three of us.
Oh, that, that's why I was confused, okay.
So it should be up, it's all torn apart in Bosworth's garage right now, waiting for the fire. So hopefully it'll be up and running this week.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions for the chief?
The only thing I can say, I've had comments, they, somebody wants it on, on the main drag, one twenty-seven, so.
First, first place it's gonna go is down by Robie Road, I've already promised, that's the first stop, and then. We'll leave it there for a short time, then we'll move from there.
Good place, okay, thanks.
Sounds good. All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. That will move us on to old business, and that gives us a follow-up on Guideboard Hill.
I wish I had more news. This is a unusual situation where you're dealing with the federal government and have sent emails to the, our contact with the Army Corps of Engineers. The resident down there gave me another name in Hockington at the Everdame, and I haven't heard back from them either, but I will, and I'm not terribly surprised.
Who are you talking to down there?
I can't remember the name, but if you know someone.
Well, I know a few people, but I just didn't, I, yeah.
There's a name that I don't have in my head, sorry. But it's, it's a process, a work in progress.
All right, so that moves us on to town properties.
The property that, I received a phone call from a butter who brought me a comfort drive. It was a property that was taken by a tax deed, a gentleman expressed interest in it. I explained our procedure. This was not one that had been considered by the planning board or the conservation mission. I have asked them if they could weigh in on giving me a suggestion on that, but this is, my question is, is the board, would the board like to pursue selling this property?
Well, if it's all the criteria, right?
Right.
Yeah.
It would be offered to be a butter's versus in Hillsborough.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
It's a point two acres.
And does the town own any of the other adjacent property, or is it only this one in the middle of other butters?
I believe it's this one only.
Nate said somebody was interested in this?
That butter was interested.
I, I would be in favor of following the procedures and policies that we have in place to go through and go ahead and put it up for, for bid with the butters.
All right, okay, so that's.
Yes, I would, it's like he said, yeah.
Do we have any other information for town properties, maintenance, and sale at this point?
I have shown eighteen one burning chairs, I think I've shown it to seven people. And the, your opening to bids, I hopefully will get bids in that next meeting that you'll be doing now. And I've also been working on the fire damage, and I have several. And I've been down there and showed that a few times. So I think it's progressing, and again, next week, either bids to fix the fire damage, those will be in front of you as well.
Perfect. All right, that moves us on to impact fee accounts.
I'm hoping I put the impact fee balances in there, but I'm happy to do that anyhow.
I didn't see it.
So why don't I do that next time?
All right. And to clarify, the, the purpose of that is so that we know not just how much we have, but also how soon it has to be used before it's gone.
All right, we have, the oldest one would have to be resolved by June of twenty-two, and you know that. And also today I did receive a request from the school for use of some of the impact fees.
So I assume we'll see that at the next meeting?
You will.
Okay, so old business that is not listed on the meeting agenda is the town hall paving?
Yes. I had hoped to get three quotes for the town hall paving project, but I only have two. So I have a quote from Porter Paving in Franklin for thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars. I have a quote from GMI Asphalt Paving, and they're in Belmont for twenty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-five.
And.
The estimates for the same work, and that's close.
And the lack of additional quotes is, I assume, is people not responding, or?
The last one I asked for a quote, it's very difficult, it's funny, but it's very difficult to get quotes at the moment, because people either don't have help, or they've got too much work, they don't wanna, they don't want to commit themselves. And the gentleman that I spoke with on the last one, he said, well, we wouldn't be able to do it this year. And, but he said he would send me a quote, but that was a while ago. And I mentioned him a couple of times, so this is busy.
All right.
We do have a permit from the state to do it as well.
Perfect, now that was something we had been waiting for, so. At this point, what do we need to do to move forward, just accept one of the quotes?
If you wanted to move forward, you would just tell me which quote, by motion, which one you wanted to do, and we would need to decide where the funds are coming from.
Did any of the other board members have questions, or, or comments, or thoughts on this?
Well, there's a big difference between, yeah, there's a big difference between the quotes, I'm really surprised, but. I think we should go along and do it.
Well, we spend a lot of money with them folks in a year's time.
GMI, yes. I wonder why, yeah.
I buy all my gravel from them through what work I do and for all the work that the town does, other than what we crush at the pit. And you add up what we spend with them folks in a year's time, they ought to give you a good deal. And. I know I'm talking out of turn, but I didn't tell you folks, it's, the second week of October is where we're scheduled to pave Concord Drive. I talked to Warren, he's the owner of GMI, because I don't deal with just anybody, they don't put up with me.
So it'd be good to do it like all at once, is that what you're trying to say? Have them do this and.
Well, that's probably part of their number, I'm assuming.
Generally moving it.
That might be why it's a little bit more different than.
One of the most challenging parts.
Yeah.
And if they're here, maybe we can actually get it done this year.
Yeah, yeah, right, that's right.
So what are the appropriate places that we could take that from?
Well.
I think we had a couple options previously when we started the project.
Yeah, I think, I think we have some money in the capital reserve funds that we could access. We don't have the town hall really any impact funds left that we can use. But we do have two, we have an expendable exit code, that trust fund that, that I think would be appropriate, and a capital reserve fund. And there is some funding in if you wanted to get into the contingency line.
How about the impact fees?
We just, we don't really have any.
We don't, okay.
Available.
We've, we've, we've used a lot of those already for town hall.
Yeah.
Over the past several years, so that doesn't have a time in it.
And we decided to pave to save money down the road, you want to give us, right? So that you don't have to keep reading.
Well, and so the people can actually access the place during light season.
Yeah, right, yeah.
The.
Less reference.
Does this also count as something that may qualify under the rescue plan?
I'm hoping so, but I don't want any of this to be there, sure.
All right. Does anybody want to make a motion for this?
I'll make a motion that we, we hired GMI at twenty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars to do the paving around the town hall.
Where the funds to come from.
Okay, where?
I would say from the capital reserve funds or the R funds.
Okay. All right.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Do we have any other further old business? All right, that moves us on to new business, and our appointment. And I believe that would be another one for you to talk about.
As you announced earlier, our deputy treasurer, Michelle Tremblay, is taking over, and I would need the board to appoint her, this would be an appointment that would go to the next election, so in other words, in March. In addition, Michelle has chosen a deputy to help her, Melissa John, and that would also go to the, be a, it would expire at the same time in, in March.
And obviously, we, we know about and have gone through questions and stuff with our deputy treasurer. Do we have either the deputy treasurer or the appointee for that here?
I don't think we have either one.
Okay.
I do not know, did I say Michelle, her name is Melissa, but someone has changed their name. But I know that Michelle Derby knows Melissa.
Yeah, the chief knows her as well.
And. Would you be able to recommend her for deputy treasurer, we certainly would ask her to come in.
Absolutely.
All right, and that sounds reasonable? Any other questions or?
Do they fill something, I mean, zoning, is that?
Yeah, it's these things that they fill out.
Just like kind of, we saw, okay.
Yeah. So, yeah, they would basically sign this and then.
And maybe sworn in.
Yeah, sworn in, their, their new positions with Michelle, yeah, the Michelle. Do we, we need a motion for this, or?
Please.
All right, I would move that we accept Michelle Tremblay as the new treasurer until the next election cycle, and Melissa John as the deputy treasurer until the next election cycle.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the next new business is the MS forms, five thirty-five and four thirty-four.
These are fascinating forms. The five thirty-five is the report that the auditors prepare, and they have just finished it. I'll be glad to try to answer questions if you have any. I did not, I looked over the form, they looked at it with me, and the board needs to sign the signature portion so that it can be filed with the DRA.
The one you have?
Yes, now, now.
Okay.
Yes, okay, and this is for the period ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty.
This is the twenty-twenty, for the year twenty-twenty. Even though it's the twenty-one MS five thirty-five.
Yeah.
The long-term bonds and notes, is there, why is that double?
Which one is that, Marla?
Under expenditures, or is there all expenditures, right?
We made up a note early for the silver, right?
Oh, okay, okay. So it's just, it's doubling up in one year?
Yeah.
And, and you can see that as a retired amount on the last page of that? Just for the sake of clarity, on page eight, everything matches except for the property tax portion, can you clarify that?
The, the difference between the MS five thirty-five and the commitment. That's a great question, I think it's due with Bill directly, and I'm not quite sure why you showed it that way.
How come they had zero estimated revenues on property taxes? Is that what we just kind of were talking about?
This was on page nine that I had.
Yeah, I'm on page five. I just was, I think I'm more curious to.
What was the question?
So on the property tax line, we had zero estimate revenues and then actuals.
We don't estimate property taxes, because that's an actual when the grade is set.
Okay, so that's like every year they know what time it is, right? That's still interesting. It makes the numbers look really weird.
Under charges for service, page five, what would fall under other charges there? As income from departments was up, but other charges was estimated to have some and had none?
I did not do the twenty-twenty revenues, and that's not a very good answer, but I think people try to fit things in there that may not come under any other heading, lack of better, but I don't know where the thirty-three thousand came in, do you know any?
The only thing I know is that that was the number that they stuck in the thirty-four oh nine. Thirty-four oh nine has nothing to do with any of our income.
So it should have probably gone in thirty-four oh one, which was income from other departments.
We kind of inherited that number.
Unfortunately, we didn't get as much interest as we hoped. Yeah, unfortunately, nobody did.
Yeah, right.
All right. I apologize for all of the excitement in this. If you want to have your own excitement with this, it will be posted on the website as soon as this is over with. Or I should say, as soon as the process is over with.
It'll be ready tomorrow.
All right.
Should you accept it?
Well, looks like we should probably accept this.
Yeah. Not many choices.
All right. Now, I would, uh, do we need motions for that, or is it a signature?
I'm just gonna send this around to your side.
Okay. And I assume the same is true for the four thirty-four that you'll tell us about?
The four thirty-four, this is a form that I signed, um, and it's the estimate of revenues. Um, there's, at the beginning of the year, when we do the budget, we estimate revenues. At this time of year, we update the revenues because we may have more information so that we have a better handle on what it will be. And at the time we set the tax rate, we can update the revenues. I would like to say, um, I believe in being, being conservative with revenues because I'd rather have a nice surprise that I've got more money than I expected than the other way around. So, um, these are figures that Wendy and I put together. So we're estimating the yearly revenues, and this is, this is money that's not raised by taxes. Seven hundred forty-five thousand, so we're estimating, and the categories are ready to see them.
And to be, to be clear, it looks like this is the same amount that we estimated at the start of the year, correct?
It hasn't really changed, I think I had a few changes. One that I'll point out is sale of town property, um, three five oh one on page two. Uh, I increased that seventy-five thousand based on sales we have pending for the two houses that we got.
All right. Thank you very much. Anybody else with, with questions on this? All right, that moves us on to the next bit of financing entertainment. All of the excitement at once, it's now time for the draft twenty-twenty audit. Would you like to tell us anything about this as we, we glance through the small amount that we roughly look at?
Well, I think I know enough to be boring, but, um, basically, it's our figures put together in a slightly different way of how the auditors like to present them. I did not see any, um, challenges or disagreement with any of the figures. And it's at this point that they're asking the board to take a look, you don't need to approve this tonight. But, um, to take a look at the audit, if you had any questions, the auditors will be able to answer them, or Wendy or I can answer them. And also, the next part that you'll be getting is some of the findings from the audit of suggestions, et cetera, which I did not hear to you yet.
That's why I wasn't seeing it, thank you.
And why I didn't do that is that I would come in, draw up the letter to advise you what we're going to do about these suggestions. And, and maybe at the same time, um, we can finish the audit and tell everyone, I love it.
Sounds good to me, any?
No, like you said, that's what they're...
That's why we hired you.
Okay.
All right. Uh, so, do we have any other new business that is not listed?
No.
Okay, that moves us on to correspondence.
You have the letter from the gentleman on Concord Drive that Emmett spoke to you about. We had a question whether the town wanted to have an audit of the former treasurer's books to August thirty-first. I did ask the auditors what they would charge, and this is their letter advising us, and in many different words, it would be twenty-five hundred dollars to have that done.
And what is the driving force or factor for this request?
It's not something we have to have done. I think if there's any, and Michelle has not said that there's any questions, but sometimes if a treasurer wants to be sure things are within what he's...
Um, placed and when she takes over.
And so, but, um, she has worked with the former treasurer, and I don't think she has any concerns, but if the board wanted to have, um, put it...
Now, this same set of data would also be covered and gone over at the normal audit that we normally do, correct?
That's right.
Okay.
So this would just be like extra money spent?
So...
Basically, this would just go to the end of August, August thirty, I guess, but again...
And she picks up and she feels comfortable with what she's picking up?
Yeah, yeah. But again, yes, it would be part of the twenty-one audit.
If she feels comfortable with what she sees already, um, and this information and scrutiny would already be covered under the audit that we would normally pay for at the end of the year? I don't see a particular reason to spend the extra money to have them look at it twice.
I agree.
And you know, the audit is a fifteen thousand dollar expense.
The one, the one they do at the end?
Yeah, the yearly one.
Yeah.
If they wanted to take the price off of that one, maybe, but...
Don't speak to them about that.
All right. Uh, do we have any other correspondence?
I have some letters that I'll go with you in an hour, that we haven't seen. We also have, today we received, um, two memorandums understanding with Paramack Valley School District. One is for the plowing and mowing arrangements that we've had for many years with them. And the other is now that the school is able to use as an emergency shelter, the agreement for that, and so that will be coming to you next time.
And, and to be clear, the, uh, plowing and, and mowing agreement is the, so that we have a copy and update the co- the existing copy and agreement? It's not substantial or, or material changes?
I think we have, our copy was quite old that we had, um, and I know that the school copy had not been signed by the school. We stress that they were willing to do so, I think this is a good idea to have.
All right, perfect. So I assume that, uh, you will take that through our legal and then you'll present it to us at the next...
I will.
All right.
Your county lawn mow out of the road budget.
Any, uh, further correspondence?
That's all the correspondence I have.
All right. So that moves us to, I guess, uh, public comment. And so, we have many public here. Do we have any public that wishes to make an additional comment? Yes?
I've been hearing Melissa John's name. She'd be a huge asset. Huge asset.
Thank you.
Hope you all will pay right back.
Well, more support for our, our new deputy treasurer. Uh, are there any other further public comments? Yes?
Hey, uh, this one's the Dana. When you did the, the thirty, is it the? MS, I called MS thirty-four and it says, um, you think there's gonna be any tax increases this year? Or what do you think the tax rate's gonna be? What you, what you see within the, those two reports?
Well, that's, that's a, that's a question that anyone in my position does not want to answer. So I'm trying to think of a lot of the words that I can get out of it. Obviously, the tax rate is based on a few things, and it's based on our budget. It's based on the school budget. It's based on how much revenue we can offset. Um, our, our operating budget did not change very much, it was four percent.
I meant for the town, I knew about the school.
Yeah, um, and the revenues, I think, are gonna be somewhat the same, so I don't expect the town's rate to change much.
Yeah, to, to, to provide a little bit more, more color on that, we have, uh, done pretty good as far as the, the town and the spending and being on budget this year. So we came up with a pretty accurate budget, uh, with the previous board, um, and that looks to be cold and true. The, I would, however, uh, as you alluded to, uh, suggest that you will probably expect to have a larger, uh, second bill for your taxes because of the increase of the bill of the school's budget. And so, as a total, when you get your tax bill, that includes the, the budget and amount from the town for taxes, the school district for taxes, the state, and also the county. The one that is going up significantly is the schools. All right. Uh, any further public comment? Yes?
Um, I know that the bigger projects, the paving was one of them, was mentioned in the, the recovery fund. We had talked, and maybe I don't mean board permission for any of this, but incorporating my expenses for that, the credit card implementation. I know it's minimal compared to those other things.
I would be glad to talk to you, Michelle, about that.
Would it qualify as what?
I would have to, I would have to, um, check that, I'm not quite sure. I mean, I have to figure into that there.
Was it two pinnies of an amount?
But I certainly would be glad to find out. Either that or I'll just hit the police, I should.
All right. Uh, so that moves us then on to, yeah, I, I guess I'll do one more, is there any other further public comment? All right, okay, yes.
Next year, when the, um, we do the bridge on closed paint bridge road, one twenty-seven's gonna be shut down with the state doing that bridge. Are, are you gonna coordinate with the, with the state? Say if you could defer heights or, to offset one another?
Very good question.
Uh, that is a good question, the state is going to be involved because of course they're paying for the majority of closed paint bridge. But, uh, yeah, the engineering firm should definitely be working to make sure that we have that coordinated. But Dana, can you make a note of that to make sure that they do?
I have asked very quickly, Jeff, he would be, um, advised among the, uh, Davisville project at the same time, so he said he would, he would...
Perfect, thank you. Yes?
My name's Natalie Wells, representative, um, so I'm involved with the water, and I don't believe that bridge, one twenty-seven, will be closed. They're discussing to find a way to still have some, um, traffic. It's not definite, that's when we close it.
Because I've been hearing from the agents and the buyers saying it won't be, it will be shut down.
Well, they may be coming in by, um, I don't know.
Dustin, Dustin? Let's hope they figure out to keep one lane with a light or something.
Thank you very much. And, and thank you for coming. Um, all right, now, any other further public comment before we move on? All right, seeing none, that brings us to support motions and approvals. Our, our next dry session. So that brings up the first one, which is the approval of draft meeting minutes from our last meeting. Page one. With, uh, end of line forty-one into forty-two, it says Chairperson Hemmway suggested putting together. And I would, uh, say that this reads that it was a suggestion that we put it together, but that was a suggestion that, uh, Mr. Potter put together the petition warrant article. Are there any other questions or changes that wish to be made?
So how did you wanna change that? Because...
So instead of Chairperson Hemmway suggested putting together a petition warrant article, it would be Chairperson Hemmway suggested Mr. Potter put together a petition warrant.
Okay, okay. So I would, I wouldn't have taken it that way, I would have just, like you were suggesting to him, so, but you wanna make it clear, that's up to you.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that it's clear, because not everybody understands that a petition warrant has to come from the public.
Yeah, well, that's true.
All right. Hearing no other changes, I would move that we accept the meeting minutes for Monday, August sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one, as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that moves us on to motions for trustees of the trust funds. Okay, yes, all right. I would move to request the trustees of trust funds issue a check in the amount of twelve thousand nine hundred twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents through invoice six five one four in the amount of two thousand four hundred and forty-five. Invoice six five one seven in the amount of eight hundred and forty dollars. Invoice six five one nine in the amount... Invoice six five one nine in the amount of two thousand dollars. Invoice two seven three zero, no, sorry, invoice six five two two for the amount of two thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars. And, this isn't quite typed right. I will return to this motion. Yeah, the invoices got slightly off with the numbers. Oh, sorry. So, I'll return to that one afterwards, after I go through this and make some quick notes on them.
If you want to give it to me, I'll fix it.
That would be perfect. All right. So, moving on, we'll get back to that one. I would move to request the trustees of trust funds issue a check in the amount of two thousand five hundred dollars for invoice R zero zero one seven three payable to Tappel Tractor for equipment rental for road construction projects. These funds are to come from the Highway and Roads Capital Reserve Fund.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I would move to request the trustees of trust funds issue a check in the amount of five thousand nine hundred fifty dollars and fifty-seven cents payable to DHB for invoice three five one one five eight dash twenty-eight for engineering services for Close Bridge Replacement Project. These funds to come from the Bridge Improvement Capital Reserve Fund.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
I would move to request the trustees of trust funds issue a check in the amount of one thousand five hundred sixty-five dollars to Sintas Fire Protection for invoice zero F nine five zero three two two nine five for installation and upgrade for fire suppression system over the range hood. These funds to come from Town Hall Improvements Capital Reserve Fund. All in favor?
Aye.
I would move to request the trustees of trust funds to issue a check in the amount of ten thousand seven hundred forty-six dollars and eighty-four cents to Bosco and Sand and Gravel for invoice P two dash zero zero five three seven six in the amount of two thousand five hundred eighty-four dollars and fifty-three cents. Invoice P two dash zero zero five three eight four in the amount of one thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety-six cents. Invoice P two dash zero zero five four zero eight in the amount of four thousand twenty-six dollars and sixty-five cents. And invoice P two dash zero zero five four two one in the amount of two thousand eight hundred and nineteen dollars and seventy cents. These funds to come from the Highway and Capital, Highways and Roads Capital Reserve Fund.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm guessing the invoice number, I guess it's a dollar amount.
Yeah, I thought that was the case, and I tried to correct it on the fly, but it wasn't lining up for me. All right. And, good, the number is still correct. So, I would move to request the trustees of trust funds issue a check in the amount of twelve thousand nine hundred twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents for invoice six five one five for the amount of two thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars. Invoice six five one seven for the amount of eight hundred and forty dollars. Invoice six five one nine for the amount of two thousand dollars. Invoice six five two one for the amount of two thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars. Invoice six five two two for the amount of two thousand four hundred fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents. And invoice six five two three for the total of two thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars. Payable to Fleeces and Flower Farm for road construction for Concord Drive and New Hampshire Drive. These funds to come from the Highways and Roads Capital Reserve Fund.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Give that back to you. And that moves us on to signing of documents, which I believe we've been doing much as we went along, but do we have further documents?
We do have documents to sign.
Of course.
Of course there's more documents.
Here we go. The two appointments. I should have announced the payroll and the accounts table. And I have... And a payment. And I need Marlo to sign this one.
Okay. Marlo, you have to sign this.
Indeed, I have to.
Okay.
You didn't have that one due.
Today is the seventh?
Oh, he stole my pen. How can I sign it?
It's one of those lines.
Look at those.
I know.
Switching.
Paper, right?
Yeah.
Have you ever signed that one before?
Okay. Well, you have to sign it as well.
No, that's good, so I can't, yeah, I'm signing it.
Oh, that's right.
You gotta buy us stuff.
Oh, I never signed that one. Oh, this was the previous one?
Yeah.
That's from Marlo.
We got the rhythm here, kids.
Which one is that? What do you do with one?
You can read that.
Oh, my God. Okay, that's it. I think that's all.
Six one, yeah.
Where's the old name?
Oh, oh, that's the front page. I was like... But, okay, so, the...
You have to use smaller ones. For campus.
That's for campus. Still have the wrong amount on it.
That's right, we have to do that.
This was the correction.
That's the correction.
So, this is correcting the amounts from the previous meeting. So, it's accurate before we actually did it? Yes. I appreciate the description, number two, on that one.
Not gonna make me curious. That's not very nice. What did I miss?
It's just a funny argument.
Yeah, that one.
All right. That concludes our signing and our public portions of this. Is there any further public comment before we move into our non-public sessions? Yes?
Are we gonna discuss about that land or...
So, would you like to update on that?
Phil, the, we have the review from the planning board, but the conservation commission did not meet in August. They're gonna meet tomorrow, and so I think we're almost there.
All right, so we have the next meeting?
Yes.
I wasn't notified.
I should have told you when I bought it, so, sorry.
Sorry.
I'll speak myself severely later. It won't be pleasant.
Yes?
Yeah, how much is in the capital reserves?
For...
Total?
The whole thing.
Capital reserves total of the capital reserve.
Fairly a large amount. We do a lot of saving in the town to make sure that we have large capital reserves rather than having to take out bonds.
I think it's somewhere about a million seven, but if you'd like to give me your information, I'll send you the balances if you'd like.
That's okay, million seven ballpark, that's okay. Thank you.
We don't like taking out loans, so we try to put everything in capital reserve as much as we can.
Yeah, we, we do our best to save up ahead of time instead of having to pay off debt and give, so. All right, any other further public comments? All right, then for notice of people on the stream, we can have two non-public sessions that we expect to do, one under RSA ninety-one A two A for employee reviews, and one under RSA ninety-one A two I for legal advice. We will go into those sessions at this time and cancel the stream. You will not see an additional stream show up, as once we come out of non-public session, we will immediately close the meeting. With that, I would move that we enter non-public session at, sorry, I only have my time, eight eleven, under ninety-one A two A for employee reviews.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for coming, everybody?
Thank you.
End the stream.